We've got to have a full house to have a quorum, so we cannot transact business today.
Yeah, there's no work session. Yeah, there's no business.
Three voting members.
But the charter says that we have four. I don't have it right here thrown off me, but.
Because three of us can't be together anywhere. I mean, we can be at the same place.
Well, I just happen to have my charter in my back pocket here.
Okay, if you've got the charter, read the part about quorum. I was telling that like a guy, I said, well, guys, right now, we've got to have a full house to have a quorum.
Yeah, and I remember us chatting about that, so let me look real quick, sir. Um. Two twenty-one. The first two, so I say, so, yeah, so, 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 yeah. Quorum. All right, since the mayor or mayor pro tem when presiding, and three council persons constitutes a quorum, three voting members shall constitute a quorum and shall be authorized to transact business by the council. So it says, three voting members shall constitute a quorum and shall be authorized to transact. So it says two different things. It says, quorum, the mayor and three council members, or three voting members. No, no wonder we need to clean this up.
We didn't have the interim mayor, and usually, the mayor can vote, but in this case, we have been, so the interim mayor can vote and not veto, so we're acting in a way that was different.
So when a quorum is presented, and since there's no vote, so you're, you're, you're the attorney. It says, the mayor or mayor pro tem when presiding, and three council members, it says, quorum. But then, there's like two spaces, and it says, capital T, three voting members shall constitute a quorum and shall be authorized to transact business of the council. So.
There are conflicting provisions. I would say, I would not want to take a risk on anything. On anything that.
There's no vote today.
I really wouldn't think we need to vote today.
Yeah, so we won't be able to do a consent agenda, so I think that's the only real thing, because everything else will be informational only then. Is that correct?
It's a work session, it's not special call meet.
Well, correct, but you, you, usually, you still try to get a consensus on like work for consensus, consent agenda, but you, you don't have enough to even do that. So everything will be informational only.
Would it help us, can we still do a consent agenda at the beginning of the next meeting?
Well, yeah, you could, yes.
It'll save us time.
You could still, as long as you got consent, but, you know, but usually, but usually, you have your full council there in order to figure out what you want to put on consent agenda.
We wouldn't be able to decide until Tuesday what we want to put on it, and then would it even, would it, would it save?
Well, then you'd have a council member that's sort of not participatory. So you, you, you can, but.
You can have a suggestion.
Yeah.
You'll have to guess what we have to consider.
So are we going to open up or not?
So, um, so based on, based, uh, Madam Mayor, based on the advice of our council, um, we, uh, you, you can open the meeting, um, and since there's no voting, there's no adoption of agenda, but there are a couple, um, uh, requested ads from, um, staff. And, Madam Clerk, did you hand those out? Okay, um, there is, um, and for obvious reasons, some ads, um, and I grouped those under G as in golf, staff requested additions, deletions. Um, some of them are just presentation, others will potentially be a vote for Tuesday. Um, but that's the only thing that was added, was, uh, section G. Um, and then the responsive documents that, uh, that, that we had have been disseminated, so.
Are we going to take that?
Oh, um, and Madam Mayor, um, we have one guest, which is G, G one, um, uh, and to, uh, I'll present in a moment, but, uh, G, G as in golf one, healthcare benefits presentation. Um, Mr. Wendell Strickland's here, and, um, I'd like him to be able to go first, uh, before we dole down the agenda. Yeah, just start from, if that's okay. All right. This is, um, Wendell Strickland, he is, um, our insurance broker. Uh, inside, uh, let's see, uh, you should have, let's see, Madam Clerk, do they have the, um, the summary page? And mine's in my book, I guess.
This one?
Oh, did, did I do that? Did I print it that small?
I've got a larger copy if you'd like to make, um, a copy. Do you have a copier here?
I, I don't think I have any copies here. I'm sorry. Holy cow, what button did I hit on the copier? Can you blow that out for the folks in the public, or at least that, that way they can see it on the screen? Can you, can you do that?
Who doesn't have one?
I think you all have it, um, it's just small, and I'm, I'm sorry, that's me. Are we live?
My eyes are getting worse, too. Doesn't have.
I've got a, well, I got, Bill read it.
Exactly.
Here, Ms. Marchwin, we got it covered.
I just got to wonder why he's carrying that with him.
Always have. It's not good.
While we are doing that, um, just a, a quick question, because I know we can bring up anything at a work session that's not on the agenda. I do have a few things that I want to make sure are brought up. Um, I gave some of y'all a heads up in an email. Do you want me to say anything about that at the beginning, or just interject it sometime?
It's up to the mayor.
Um, I want us to at least discuss the sign ordinance and some of the impact it's starting to have that we may not have attended, I mean, I'm sorry, intended. Um, okay, I'm drawn. Other thing is, I, I'd like to get the results for, uh, the city manager survey that we did. I, I haven't gotten those, so I'm assuming no one else has either. I'd like to get that. And I'd also like to address our passwords for our city emails, which I was given when I first became a city council member. My password was given to me, which means somebody else who gave it to me initially has my password. I did not make my own password, which gives me a little pause on security as far as my city email.
Okay.
Doesn't that sound like fun? Okay.
Okay, let's see, whoever we put that, I guess that would maybe go under governing body? After governing body, on F? Is that okay? With everybody?
Doesn't matter to me when, that'll be fine.
Good place to put it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, this one, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm not that old yet, I don't need a blown up. I'm good.
Apparently, I'm much older than Verlin, because I appreciate the blown up version, even with my glasses.
If I honestly read this, I don't know why.
Wish I didn't blow it up.
Thank you anyway. I believe it.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Well, my name's Wendell Strickland. Thank y'all so much for allowing me to come in and speak this evening. Um, I'm your healthcare consultant. My job is to work with, uh, with you and your staff to look at your annual benefits program and to ensure that you are receiving the best benefits that you can for the appropriate cost. And so this year, um, as I do every year, we have a renewal coming up. And my job is to look at the benefits, talk to your staff, make sure that the appropriate benefits are what we want, and then also to market and look at all types of different carriers and funding mechanisms to ensure that, um, we have, uh, looked at every possible option to, uh, maintain the comprehensive benefits you have and to ensure the cost for us as best you can. So this year, um, uh, if you look at, um, underneath the word medical, that's where we are. The city of Villarica had a, um, a high utilization plan year, they had a, a large claim year. So for every dollar that the city spent in premiums to United Healthcare, they paid out a dollar sixteen. So you had a hundred and sixteen percent utilization of your health insurance plan, and, um, that's pretty unusual. Um, but it does cause for the carriers to want to recoup that, and so it resulted in a higher-than-normal, uh, increase. The good news is that over the past three years, your utilization is averaging about eighty-six percent. So this is, if, if you look at healthcare in a five-year continuum, uh, you're going to have three really good years, one bad year and one super bad year, and that's kind of how the cyclical nature of healthcare is in general. It doesn't follow that way every time. So you have had your, uh, hopefully, your one bad year, uh, and the next three years should return back to normal to your eighty-six percent. So, so United Healthcare did come out with a thirty point nine percent increase to your renewal, which represents a three hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollar increase at a hundred and nineteen employees. So, um, that's something to keep in mind. We went out to every single possible market, whether it's fully insured, self-funded, captives, and, um, and used that and our negotiations to negotiate them down to a twenty-two point nine percent increase or a two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollar annual increase at a hundred and nineteen employees. Um, as, just to give you a little bit more of the insight on what we did for your marketing, we're, we're just specifically talking about medical at this point. But you have different categories of providers, and the categories are fully insured. So we went back out to all the fully insured carriers, as you see there. And even inside your fully insured, we look at changing the deductibles, but using a split deductible arrangement where we, um, we raised the deductible to the plan, but not to the employees, and we use those savings to pay that difference back to the employees. And that wasn't successful. We went back to the marketplace to level funded, which means, um, if you have a carrier where you don't use all your premiums, they give some of that back at the end of the year, and those were uncompetitive. And then we looked at pooling you with other cities and other types of employers, and what we call captive arrangements, and those came back, uh, above your current renewal. And then we looked at straight, partially self-funded, and all the vendors there that we went out to, you can see, uh, the marketing efforts. Um, at the end of all this, um, we ended up with, as I said, um, we were able to reduce your renewal from a thirty point nine down to a twenty-two point nine, um, but it's still a two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollar increase. Some other information, um, you know, last year, we were very fortunate. We actually were able to, um, give you a negative seven. I don't know if everybody was here last year, but we were able to go from a, I think it was a positive six or ten to a negative seven. This year, with the twenty-two point nine, your average increase year over year is seven point nine five. The national average is twelve point nine. So effectively, over two years, we've been able to, to keep you underneath the, um, trend increase for the national averages, and you're, definitely, your renewal this year, um, in combination with last year, puts you, you know, at or below par with other cities and counties, so I just wanted to point that out. The other insurance coverages, um, dental, vision, basic life, voluntary life, short-term disability, long-term disability. We were able to negotiate, uh, multi-year contracts last year, so, uh, they were under a rate guarantee, so no increases on those at all. After working with your staff diligently to look at these benefits and looking at all the other plan alternatives we looked at, it's, um, it's my recommendation, uh, that we would renew with United Healthcare with your current plan. Um, and then, um, you know, uh, figure out, figure out how to handle the two hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase. So not my best, uh, or most exciting delivery last year. The negative seven was certainly a champion year, um, but this year is a twenty-two point nine, and, um, that's just where we are for the sixteen-seventeen plan year.
So, um, for the councils, um, sort of fiduciary, so you're looking at roughly about three hundred thousand, give or take, um, as a hit to the budget, but that's not in this current, uh, year. Um, our plan obviously doesn't run calendar year. So what that means is that in order to, uh, continue to make our premiums, um, we've got to find about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the current budget in order to stay within budget. So, uh, we're, you know, if, if, um, uh, if the council is, is satisfied that the brokers done all their work, then basically between now and the end of the year, um, we'll continue to, um, shave where we can in the budget, hopefully come up with about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, without having to have any increase in the budget, um, because of the healthcare costs. Uh, looking at some things with the CFO this morning, um, uh, looking at some of the trend items, um, on the general fund, um, uh, that very well may be doable. Um, so, uh, so we shall see, but, um, that's the budget impact. Then from the policy standpoint, is, um, when you look at the utilization of the healthcare, um, a, a policy statement is, uh, whether or not we continue to, to, uh, allow benefits to remain as they are, meaning, uh, we pay a hundred percent of, uh, healthcare on the employee side, less the deductibles. Um, and then, uh, we, um, certainly provide a, uh, a, a grand percentage, uh, on the family coverage. Um, right now, we, uh, allow employees to opt out of peak health, um, provided if they opt out, they have to pay a surcharge. So the real question comes down to whether or not, you know, from a policy side, we allow anyone to opt out. And then, um, as a potential policy, uh, discussion, the, uh, question could also be as far as the insured dependents, um, whether or not we, uh, work with our provider to do annual screenings and preventive, uh, screenings on an annual basis. Um, because when you, uh, catch problems early on, certainly, the impact to, uh, our healthcare costs, um, will be substantially less. So, so that's really the, um, uh, sort of the finite of the impact, you know, from the, uh, the fiduciary side and the policy side.
I'd like to ask a question, Wendell. Uh, is any of the increase that, uh, is being passed to the city, is that attributable to insurance rate increasing just across the board as a result of, uh, universal healthcare, or is it all just attributable to the Villarica experience?
A great question. So the, the trend, twelve point nine, is what the average increase is based on inflation. They blend your utilization with their pooling points at the carrier. So at a hundred and nineteen employees, you're not credible on your own, so you have to, um, be blended with manual versus, um, your credibility piece. So, um, you're only about, um, uh, forty percent credible. So they take forty percent of your claims and match that with their pooling points, and they come up with a blended average. But certainly, um, the amount over the twelve point nine is attributed to the, uh, the high-cost claim year from the city of Villarica. I hope that wasn't too much jargon for.
No, it was just represented across the country that healthcare costs should be going down, and they don't appear to be.
Well, you know, there's, um, you know, there are some, uh, other pieces in there with the state mandates from Affordable Care. They're driving some of the cost up, um, and just some of the taxes and the other things that are in there. They're saying there's about a, I think it's six point four percent, I, I believe that's right, about six point four percent of the increase is, uh, due to the Affordable Care Act.
So it's a combination of the two.
It's really three. It's Affordable Care Act, it's.
Our losses.
And then the annual trend.
Okay. Okay.
All right, are there any other concerns? Everybody's clear?
Thank you, Wendell.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Next, under A, is finance.
Good afternoon. Today, bringing before you a budget adjustment. I'm not sure of the details of the accident, we had, but we had a totaled twenty-fourteen Ford Taurus, one of the police vehicles. And we did receive the proceeds from the insurance company. They sent us fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. So this is a budget, um, adjustment to increase the revenue for the amount we received and also increase the expense so we can purchase the new vehicle. Any questions?
Just, sorry it got totaled, but glad our officer's okay.
Thank you. Under B, community development, Ms. Hyde. Number one is conditional use permits.
This is the item that was brought before you last month, and the applicant brought additional information for you all to read, and it's going to be heard again.
It was very enjoyable. I told Ms. Poor.
On Tuesday, and we've told the applicant to be here, and we've advertised this as a public hearing for Tuesday.
Did this go back before the planning commission?
It did not.
Any questions?
I don't think, I, I mean, I read through everything, and, and I went out and saw it, saw it a couple of weeks ago, so I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Item number two that I have is the drone use ordinance. Um, you may recall, I brought this to you last month. And it stated that it would be, we'd be regulating drone use all over the city, on even over private property, but now we revised that to say that it will only be on city property or at public events with more than one hundred people in attendance.
Around one hundred people.
Um, that is a number that was used by another city as a.
To show that it's heavily populated.
Yes, that's, that's the definition of heavily populated.
So if there's an event going on, or there's a sporting event, it's not going over the baseball players or something like that, or over the stands? I understand all the safety issues. I had one question, though, um, because it said, um, all city property or the highly populated, right?
Right.
So here's my question, um, if, if you're out at Goldust and nobody's there, and you wanted to play with your drone in a city park, you couldn't do it, right?
Right.
I understand that, even if it's not populated. So it's city property or?
Heavily populated.
Heavily populated. So that heavily populated still includes private property?
If it's an event with over one hundred people.
Does it have to be flying over the people? I mean, I know this seems like nitpicking, but I just don't want to restrict people's freedom. If, like, say they want to get a picture of everybody, and they have it over here, and the people are all here, my opinion is they ought to be able to do it, because it's not going to fall on anybody's head, because there really can be something serious that can happen when it's going over people, because these things can be large, and they can fall from a pretty high, you know, a pretty high distance in the sky. So in there, with gravity, they're automatically gaining speed as they fall.
Right.
So.
As it reads, the definition of a highly populated area is a sporting, recreation, or entertainment event in Villarica with a seating capacity of one hundred or more persons, an open-air assembly of one hundred or more persons, and any area specifically designated by the city council as a highly populated area.
Okay, that wouldn't, that would be my only concern, that people ought to be able to use it if it's off to the side of where the population is hanging out. Otherwise, how would even people do special things if they want to show who's at the concert?
They would have to show that they.
But they're not, they're outside the zone of where the people are standing. They couldn't do that, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's my problem. That'd be my only problem with it. I think we need to do something so they're not flying over people's heads. And I don't want people flying into other people's fenced-in backyards. You know, privacy issues, that's been talked about on the state level. That's my only concern.
And I don't know, I'll admit, I don't know as much about drones as the city manager does, so if. Give me questions, I'll defer to him about the actual operation of the drone.
Do we have anybody in the city that else that owns drones that? I mean, I sent an email to one drone owner and said, if you want any input on this, say so, because I'm not a drone flyer. So I said, you know, if you have any input, you know, let us know. They may be here Tuesday, but. Anybody else on a drone? You know, we have a couple of people in the audience that do. Madam Mayor?
We've got public hearing on Tuesday, so I guess they can. State their concern on Tuesday.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can I just make, make a suggestion? If it's an event like that, and somebody does want to take pictures, could it be in the ordinance or something that they get permission from the city manager or his designate and would allow it then? You okay with that, sir?
I'm, I'm fine. I mean, the, uh, the ordinance itself came up through community development after my initial request, but I was only, um, originally concerned about, um, over-city property.
Does the police department use drones? Do y'all use drones?
Thank you, Mary Council. Jeff Reese, one-twenty, Harrell Road. I may be the only person in the city of Villarica that actually has a federal license. I don't know if you do. I have a FAA commercial license to fly a drone, and, uh, there are regulations that are, that already regulate this industry. And, uh, they're evolving every day because it is a new industry, but now you can't fly a drone over a person, period. Um, and I would kind of concur with your, your comments. I fully understand, uh, the city manager and I have talked about flying in city parks. I, I agree with that completely. Uh, where I don't agree with it is, if I'm having a private event at my house, first of all, I can't fly it within five miles of, of an airport anyway. That pretty much controls all of Villarica. But if I were outside that five miles, and, and I was having a, an event at my house, and there were a hundred and one people there, uh, I don't see why the city should regulate that on my private property, especially since there are already federal laws in place that cover that. Any drone that flies that, that weighs less than fifty-five pounds or over a half a pound has to have a, an FCC license on the drone itself. So if something happens, it's just like a tag on a car. If that drone flies away and it hits someone or causes damage, uh, then that drone, you can register, we can find that drone, who the owner is through that registration number. So I would just caution the, or not caution, but just advise, I guess, that the council, that there are already federal laws in place that cover most of this. Uh, again, the, the city, over-city, in-city parks, I understand that completely. Uh, on my private property, as long as I'm outside five miles of an airport, uh, and I'm flying within FAA regulations, I, I don't see that the city needs to trump that, or try to trump that federal law.
Janet, if, I'm sorry, if we, if we had our own city event, we could give ourselves permission to take pictures without flying it over people's heads. That's kind of, I just want to, I just want to have some flexibility for that sort of thing, special events.
But is, is most houses around you within that five mile radius of Apple?
Probably about half the city.
Because of, uh, Stock Mar? See, and I didn't realize that. That's the thing. That's why I need to learn and hear from people who use these things, because I don't know all those federal regulations and what kind of licenses you have to have.
The entire city is actually governed. It's not just the airport, it's also the helipads, so you have Tanner Medical, you have Southside. Um, so it's not just, um, commercial airports, um, or a, you know, Stock Mar private airport. It's also, um, the aviation helipads.
Really? We don't have to worry about it, because it's taken care of with all the airports and helipads, so.
Um, actually, no, sir.
The size?
Uh, no, sir. Um, uh, you, you have flight restrictions, um, but once you, uh, file a flight plan, you then can, um, fly your drone. So the FAA gives you guidance, but, but then you also, um, have, um, sort of policy and protocol that you have to follow. So, no, it's, it's not a no-fly zone, period.
Bring us back the FAA instructions, Ms. Hyde.
I'm sorry?
Bring us back the FAA requirements and everything, and then.
I can do that.
And then we can sit down with a map and figure out where, who, and why, and who can't.
Yeah, and those are only, um, commercial. Um, they don't have them for, um, uh, which, which is my concern, which is the amateur. Um, and that's, that's who, basically, I'm after regulating. That's why I only specified city property. It's the amateurs that can go down to your local, you know, store and buy one and be flying.
Well, we've got to start somewhere.
Is it that, is it that easy? I mean, they buy it, and there's no, they're not informed of regulation, that sort of thing?
Nope.
This gets complicated.
The next item I have is a conditional use permit by Greg Daniel. Um, he's applying for a conditional. for conditional use to move his wrecker service to 106 Hunter Industrial, parcel V060070137 and 0102. It's Land Lot 144, the second district. Planning Commission heard this Tuesday night, and they recommended approval of this. This is over 10 acres of land. The next item I have is overnight parking of trucks. This is an ordinance to prohibit parking of tractor-trailers on commercial property, except for the purpose of loading and unloading. We've had some issues with trucks parking in the city on commercial property and staying overnight, even though it's not a truck stop. And this is to try to get a handle on that.
I looked at this one. Are you done? I'm sorry. You done? I looked at this. I thought, oh, this will be easy. It's only one page. Do you see my notes? The, I don't know how this happened, but the executive summary, I understand, we've actually discussed this about those trucks. I think it's out in the industrial area, isn't it?
It's, it's a problem there, as well as some of the commercial parking lots.
Okay, all right. So that was fine. I actually was aware of that, that they're tearing up some of our roads, and, and then they're gone, and we get stuck with it. Or they're spending the night there, and we have truck stops. There's Hess, and Flying J, and the Pilot, and everything down the road, and Temple. However, this one also, the executive summary is one thing, but when you get into the actual ordinance, it talks about semi-trailer trucks, then it goes into tow trucks. So it gives a mileage, 900 pounds gross on the semi, or any vehicle designed, used, or maintained for towing motor vehicles or equip, or equipment upon a street or shoulder thereof. Okay, so in order to not drive you crazy with all the specifics and details, I wrote on this, when it comes right down to it, it sounds to me that if somebody comes over here to Doyle's to unload, and they stay for more than 20 minutes, they're in trouble on this. If you pull over by Waffle House in a truck, and you're not unloading or loading, you can't do that. And it's one thing, semis don't go into a lot of these places, like Ingalls. They want to park in that big parking lot, go shopping. They usually don't get in there, because getting in and out of there, the egress and ingress is a nightmare. I know, because we pull a fifth wheel, and it's hard sometimes even getting in with that. It sounds to me like tow trucks can't be a lot of places either, and if I'm reading it correctly, that when my relatives come into town, and they're moving from Tennessee to Georgia, and they have one of those trailers on the back with some stuff loaded in it, and they can't park it in my driveway overnight, that would be in trouble, and so would the golf cart guy every time he comes over and sits for more than 20 minutes on our road to unload a golf cart. I just want to know if the chief is really looking forward to enforcing that.
And I do know that issue has come up before about commercial parking in residential areas, and we never really got a resolution to that. I can take the tow truck designation out.
I mean, I'm not sure.
I see that that's a little bit ambiguous. I was seeing that as a tractor-trailer hauling a trailer, but, but it does sound more like a tow truck if somebody else reads it. And we can increase the time for loading to, say, an hour, or...
I don't know. I'm sure I'm not the only one. Obviously, we don't make these based on my opinion. I'm sure we need to take input from everyone else. I just saw it extremely restrictive. Can, and is it really a problem other than those areas where those semis are staying? If that's where the problem is, let's address the problem. It sounds to me like we're going to every street in this city and saying, "You're not going to have a tow truck there, and you're also not going to have anything that has..." A landscaper would probably get away with it if they get their stuff on and off in 20 minutes, and they're back on in 20 minutes. I mean, they wouldn't even qualify under this. So that's, that's the problem I see. It's so restrictive that enforcing it would be a nightmare. Plus, it'd be a nightmare, period, because we'd be micromanaging every street in the neighborhood. Where are these semis causing a problem? Can we address that? Are tow trucks causing a problem? I don't know. Maybe tow trucks are causing a problem.
No. I was using that, like I said, as a definition for a tractor-trailer that's carrying a trailer, but we can redefine that. The problem areas are the industrial part, where they're tearing up the shoulders, the roads, and some of the commercial areas around the exit where Hardee's and Walmart, they're parking overnight.
Yeah, and Walmart, I noticed Walmart used to allow parking even for RVs, and they have signs up now, "No overnight." So they're, they're regulating their own property now. Oh, you are just the best. Thank you. Coffee. So, I don't know. I didn't, am I the only one that has an issue with that?
I can tweak this a little before Tuesday, if y'all want me to.
The 20-minute may be an issue. I think the issues that have come to light are because a guy goes into one of the eating establishments in his tractor-trailer, eats supper, comes back out, carols in the back of his cab, and goes to sleep. And it's certainly not designed to sleep overnight. It's designed to go in, be able to eat at that place, and then move on to another, another place. The timeframe, I don't know what's 20 minutes, 30 minutes, an hour. I don't know what the right verbiage would be there, but I think more than anything, it's the idea that the folks are staying overnight when the area is not designed for overnight parking. To me, it is, anyway.
And those shoulders, right, over the industrial area?
In the industrial part.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not right, because the city's having to repair and pay for that. The taxpayers are stuck with it. It wasn't that fun. I'm sorry. A little too much.
The next item, I think, on the agenda is the nuisance ordinance, and we're going to ask that we put that one off for another month. So number six is alcoholic beverages, and I'm going to let Mr. Mecklen take care of that one, since he...
These are the revisions that I just sent in yesterday, I think. You've got a redline version, and let me preface this by saying, part of the redline is portions that we've already added into the ordinance, like the wine and craft beer. That's already been added into the ordinance, but for some reason, it showed up as redline here also. The parts to look at specifically are the change in the hours, which now allows restaurants to continue to serve beer and wine beverages up till 1:30 a.m., where formerly it said midnight. That was one change. We also tried to better define who would be a license holder. Remembering a couple of cases, we had a, an employee that was designated as the license holder, and rather than providing that that would just be an employee, we are changing the definition to say that it has to be a designated manager of the, of the convenience store or restaurant, somebody who has got some responsibility. I think designated manager, trying to remember saying that they've got the primary authority over the establishment. And also, on our background checks, I increased the period of time that we would go back in a couple of instances, rather than, rather than just looking back at alcohol-related offenses for four years. We're now proposing that we go back six years, and that we change from five to seven years, the qualification, that they not have had any type of prior revocation of their license. So that's a few small changes, but they're ones that you have requested over the last few months.
So did you say we're delaying this?
No, it was the nuisance ordinance we were delaying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I did have one thing on this. On page four, section 3-18, under qualifications, I think we were going to take out paragraph D.
318, paragraph D.
A licensee of the, shall be the owner of the premises license or a holder of the lease.
Yes, I think that was one that we were going to take out, so that, I mean, that was more confusing than anything else.
My pages aren't numbered.
Yeah, mine aren't either.
So, and it looks like I'm front and back. So when we say page four, what do we mean?
The actual fourth page with text on it.
Okay.
The back of the second page.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The back of the first page.
Oh, I haven't drank my coffee yet. Okay.
She's talking about taking out D right there.
And then we added a license type for Farm Winery, and I don't think that's in this version. I didn't see it, but I read through it pretty quickly.
It may not be.
I didn't get a chance to read this yet.
I'll go back and look at the Farm Winery.
Okay.
We don't have anybody that has applied for that yet, have we?
Um, yes, we do.
Is that it for Simon?
That's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now we will go to see which is public work.
Oh, okay, all right.
The first one here is actually the contract for maintenance with the Georgia Department of Transportation. I had conveyed to council last year that we were going to pursue negotiations with the Department of Transportation to actually pay us for services we have already been providing, to wit, that is the mowing of the rightways on the state and federal highways within the city limits, and then also litter control, and then we also provide ice and snow removal services. This is a, an agreement with GDOT that says that they will pay us $2,000 per center line mileage, per center line mile for those services. This is on the Carroll County side. We are still in negotiations with the GDOT district that services the Douglas County. So roughly, this is 18,000 and some change on annual basis of money being sent back to the city for services that it already regularly provides. And that, those are spelled out in, on page two, section four, which is mowing and cleaning of rightaway and snow and ice removal.
David, were we, we were already maintaining a lot of this road, or all of it?
We've been maintaining all of it.
We've been maintaining all of it. Well, thank you for doing this. We're actually going to get paid for maintaining the state roadways that normally they'd have to do, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. That's good. For doing their job, they can pay us for it. Thank you for working that out.
Good afternoon. Like to give you an update on the water plant. After several months of repair and replacement, and more importantly, waiting for cooperation from Mother Nature, which has definitely taught me humility and patience, I plan to begin processing water August 1st. So that'd be next week. The beginning of the month was also selected because we have required state sampling, that had we done it last week, or even this week, we run the risk of not getting certain water quality samples in on time. This way, we're kind of starting the month off in good fashion. You should be able to sync with what those sampling protocols require. I appreciate everybody's support and patience during this trying time, and I'd like to thank my staff for all of their hard efforts and work. And I'd like to stress that we're only at a beginning. This is not an end. There's still a tremendous amount of work left to do. A lot of these items include more equipment replacement, more evaluation. We still have to take a look at overall interior, exterior work that will be required, but I feel at this point we can at least move forward and produce water. The water appears to be at an acceptable point, that we can move forward with it. To start with, I anticipate trying to process a million gallons a day until we get to a steady state where we do have some new feed equipment and stuff. So once we're comfortable with all of that, and we're putting out good quality water, then we will start trying to transfer some water from Lake Cowans to supplement Fashion, which at that point, we'll be able to bump up the rate to what our permit is. Even though we have a permit of 1.5 million gallons a day, provided that we're pumping half a million gallons from Cowans to Fashion, our pumps are probably only going to allow us to do about 330,000 gallons, not all of the half a million. We want to look into that and see if it's a function of the pumps, or whether we have the right-sized discharge pipe and those kinds of things, but that's down the road. So that's what we're looking at, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
You gonna have a prayer meeting before we turn things on?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item D is parks, recreational leisure services. Ms. Vicki Coleman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
This is the item from last month. This is the request from the Lions Club concerning the Taste of Villareca. The Lions Club is requesting use of the mill for the Taste of Villareca event. Based on our discussion last month, it really centered around all of the components that would come along for this event that the city has traditionally provided in some aspects, which the concern was the sound and lighting, as well as, they have not, in this particular request, asked for staff assistance. However, traditionally, that has been what has come forward. Typically, anytime there are community events that are scheduled at the mill, there, whether it's the setup, or whether it has been typically the staff that's there, because everyone who may be loading or overloading circuits, there are always requests for staff to address those kinds of issues. So what you see before you, it is just some of the costs that are typically associated with it. I would really have to defer to really let them provide a little bit more of an explanation beyond what they have maybe prepared in the letter that was provided to the city, because I believe it is their desire to try to use mostly volunteers, if you will, to address a lot of the setup needs, or even some of the breakdown needs. But again, I just wanted to make sure that some of the other costs that are usually, that usually go along with this event, you at least are aware of, and that it's been provided to you.
So in the past, this was all just done by the city?
Let me say, years ago, it was certainly a city event. When it transitioned over to the Lions Club, there were certainly still aspects of it that the city participated in, and the city paid for. What I have, again, are some of the initial items that, in terms of the facility itself, and customarily what they asked for, that based upon the conversation last month, we believe that it was something that wouldn't really be an issue as far as the facility use, that that would be agreeable to. But all the other parts, the sound and lighting, some of the city staffing that has, the last-minute requests that come related to the city staff in the event, just provided a little bit more of a breakdown of that for your review and consideration. And again, it was not included in the letter that came to the city, but I just wanted to let you know that that is typically what comes with it. And I don't know if there, if anyone's here that may be able to speak to the request itself.
I, I have one question before we go on.
Sure.
After the meeting, I, last time I went back and looked, and I, I don't think that the, our current POP audio contract includes this event. I mean, I didn't see it on there as one of our listed events, is that right?
So this is one of the events where we said that communities, community partners, if you would, would come to the city council and make the request. So in terms of sound and lighting, this would be at the 1825, which is customarily what had been paid in the past by the city. This was our way of breaking it out and making them come and make the request to the city.
Yeah, my only point being that this is not something we've, that the city has already paid for yet. Or committed, we haven't committed to paying for it.
No, it was just identified on the list for consideration.
I can see where, because they bring a lot of people in, it benefits our restaurants in town, and I can see where we allow them to use the amphitheater. Maybe we can work with them on some of this employee stuff with the setup. If there are some volunteers and we only have to have somebody that kinda makes sure it gets out of the building and nothing gets broken, you know, when it starts, and they, and they could actually do some of their own setup, that would say, allow them to use more of their money. I don't see the city going out and hiring the sound and lighting, which we don't do. We don't do sound and lighting, the city doesn't. We have to go hire somebody for somebody else's event. That I, I have some issue with, but I would definitely like to see it where it, it's not that kinda cost in the end. If we can work with them on bringing down some of that cost on staff or whatever.
I can't see.
It's really too short. Mr. McHill can answer this better than I can. I was told, and I wasn't there, so I don't know, that the Men's Lions Club usually sets up and takes down with just one person from the city there to unlock everything along, is that right?
That's right. So that would help.
And I know we have the, usually the explorers volunteer and they help anyway and toward cleaning up. Now, I was told, and again, I did not hear this firsthand, so I don't know, that POP audio was already included to do that. So, okay.
I don't think so.
And I don't know, I haven't seen any paperwork or anything on that. So, but I do know this, they bring in, and I have the tokens that I was gonna give to Mr. Miller, bring in a lot of money and all the money goes back out, and I think it's 60% are, is that right? 60% goes back directly to this community in the form of supporting the communities and schools, the lunch shops, the backpack clubs and the summer.
Rafa.
Um, in, in his hands, that it, and not to mention, then it goes to the White House in Atlanta and the camp for the Blighs, who send, or schedule to send two students there this summer. But even once it goes to the White House, a lot of that is back to the community, because it just winds up back out. But I do have a breakdown, but I'll make a copy of this to Mr. Miller before Tuesday night.
Sounds like tourism needs a $1,825 chick.
I just want, I just wanna say it's raining. Thank you for whoever was praying. It's raining. Maybe it'll continue.
I don't know if it was the DDA or tourism, I was advised that, I believe it was a thousand dollar contribution or sponsorship was made to, to the event. I was informed that, I believe, on Tuesday. Tourism, thank you.
We have to take that under consideration. Alright, okay.
Missed the donation.
Item number two, renewal.
Did tourism make a donation?
Yes. This second item is the annual contract that comes from the Three Rivers Commission. This is concerning the contract for senior services, the congregate meals and the home-delivered meals. This is the updated contract for the new fiscal year. So, again, this is standard. This is where your reimbursement funds come related to, again, congregate and home-delivered meals.
So this is, as to part renewal of the?
It's, it's a renewal of.
Of something that we already do?
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's all for the seniors.
Correct.
Senior with the meals, yeah, okay, I glanced through it.
Mr. Miller, which, which one did we lose here three, four months ago? Some contract. Was it with the seniors?
Lose?
Mm-hmm.
No, I, I think what you may be talking about, what we realized was the contract for the, the.
previous year.
Yeah, the one that we just came out of, which would've been 2016. It didn't come before the city council when it was supposed to, so we sent it later in the year, just to make sure that we had covered our bases. And what I mentioned at that time is that the 2017 would be coming in a few months. This is the 2017 fiscal year contract that's before you right now.
Thank you.
Alright, you finished? That's all you have, okay. E is public safety. I'll be listening to Chief Mansur.
Could we, um, this is, actually, this is the tailwind. I'll go ahead and answer on this one since I sent it out. So, we did the information on the budget amendment, which was A number one, which is the mercury insurance. So that was $15,538.97 coming back from the totaled car. That was of no fault to the officer, that was a distracted driver that T-boned one of our cars. So, now they're down one vehicle. However, now that we will soon be up to our three part-time code enforcement officers, they've been using our administrative car. So the department, the police department has offered to provide us one of their older model cars for code enforcement, and in return, if we take the 15 five that we got back from the proceeds, supplement it from car money that was allocated in another agreement, we'll have enough to purchase a Ford Fusion for, as a detective car for the police department. So, so that's what this purchase is about, which was something I had communicated to council to understand the numbers.
So one of the older cars will go to code enforcement. I only have one question, I bet you guys have already answered it. If it was bought with drug money, it has to stay in the police department, right?
Correct.
So obviously, this vehicle that will be passed on was not bought with drug money.
That's correct.
We don't sell drugs, not that kinda drug money. Drug seizure money, I'm so sorry, I should've said that that way.
Correct. And, and I know that Coach is about to ask this question. So what you see on your screen is the state contract of, of that price. Because we don't know and we don't have approval yet as to whether or not we're gonna be able to buy a car, we have sent out to the dealerships, just as we did with the last purchase of cars, and they are submitting bids to the city. So there's been no decision as to where the purchase of the cars being made, 'cause we don't have authorization to make a purchase. Did that answer your question, Coach?
Well, not actually, but that's good enough.
Always want to include local dealerships.
Okay.
Yes, it did.
I just looked at the screen and it's like, oh, and, and his face was like right there. I knew what he was about to ask.
Alright.
But they, they hold the state contract, so, so that's the price that you gotta meet or exceed.
Oh, I agree.
So I did pretty good there, huh?
Wait a minute, it says, purchase of 2017 Ford Fusion, base model for use as detective car by police department, city manager.
He got promoted this afternoon.
Oh, got promoted, oh, okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
F governing body, item one is by our city attorney.
Yeah, the first item is an ordinance to establish the office of a solicitor. This is really a housekeeping item for us, because we've had a solicitor prosecuting attorney of our municipal court for a long time now. And in looking back to try and find the ordinance that created that, haven't located one, so we need to clear that up. There's a state law that requires that we, if we're gonna have one, that we do it in accordance with the statute that's cited in number, section number six of that ordinance. So this is ordinance that will officially create a position that we've had for many years now. As you're aware, we're trying to fill that office right now. We have a vacancy since we elevated our last prosecuting attorney to the position of judge, municipal judge. Couple of people have asked me a question about the appointment of the solicitor, and in, in my view, the solicitor would be equivalent to a department head of essentially the prosecuting arm of our municipal court. And our city charter says that the city manager would appoint department heads with the approval of the coun, of the council.
I think you just answered my two questions, 'cause I was like, don't we already have a solicitor? How can we not have a created position? We just didn't have it written.
Don't have it on paper officially the way we should.
And they are the equivalent of a department head? So city manager goes through the process of choosing someone, mayor and council approve. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Alright. Item number two, by our city manager.
This is actually a proposed ordinance, which would grant franchise to Greystone Power Corporation for use of public rightaway. And this is, if adopted by the council, is a 4% franchise. Those are a code word, that means that if you are a Greystone customer, you're paying the 4%, and then they're just simply sending the 4% to the city. It's a pass-through for utilization of city rightaway, and this agreement would be for 35 years.
On the copy, I, I did look over it, and, and the agreement looks fine, except I didn't see the map that was attached to it. Do you know what part of the city Greystone serves?
At one point, Janet, I know they had inquired on our city limit map. Did they ever, did we provide that to them? And they did not provide that back, 'cause we had provided them our map. And so anywhere that they have utility or expands in the utility, as long as it's in city limits, they're amenable to paying us the 4%. But they didn't provide us like their customer map, if you will, or their service map.
I don't think they cover much of the ci, of the city limits, 'cause I think it's primarily Georgia Power that probably provides service to the city. They may have some houses.
They do, yeah. As far as the franchise fee is not, you're absolutely right.
So this is basically just about the franchise fee for the small areas where they do operate? Okay, 'cause we had Greystone when we lived in the county, and I didn't realize they even had, we, I didn't even realize they were within city limits, so.
Yeah, we actually have, in, in the city, we have three companies. EMC also provide some services as well, so we actually have three within the city limits. So, and then, once, once we go to execute this course, we'll attach the Incorporated City map.
Alright, item number three is our city manager.
This is a renewal of the annual contract with the Carroll County Sheriff's Department. There's actually, in your book, there's only one agreement, but they're duplicated, there's actually two. We've secured two inmate labor crews from Carroll County Sheriff's Department. There's no changes in the contract or the amount over what is currently in play.
Should we be able to recoup any monies that the sheriff's department don't comply with having six inmates sent up here?
We can certainly go back and attempt, but I will also tell you that we also get the services at, at an actual discount. I've talked to the sheriff on, on at least two occasions, and he reiterates, because for instance, we utilize the jail for prisoners and vice versa, that we actually are not paying full freight. For instance, like in Douglas County or with the Carroll County prison, we pay full freight for all costs associated with the guard, whereas in this case, we do not, sir. So the answer is yes, but the question is, do you want to?
I know the money that we are paying is, is directly sent to the guard. There's no other, we furnish everything else, except they furnish the inmates, so I just, there's some, ought to be some way, some mechanism we can, instead of getting three and four, get, get six like we contract for.
I'll certainly ask about that with them.
So there, we have two, but this contract only refers to one of them? Did I miss?
No, there, i, if executed, we'll have to sign two of the same contract. They, they want one for each.
Got it.
Guard as, so.
Alright, I, number four.
Number four is previously the council directed staff to conduct a alcohol beverage audit. In order to do that audit, there's compliance services offered through the Georgia Municipal Association. So in your book is the agreement to affect those services. Given that we have 15 establishments that would qualify under the audit, this is at a cost of $11,500 to perform the audit.
Would you clarify that for the sake of the audience? Why this is happening, why we're doing an audit? Of alcohol selling, hot bars?
You were told to one time.
Well, I was told to.
Okay, well, that would be a good start.
The, a lot of this came out of the discussion as to whether or not we have bars or restaurants, and, and so the conversation with the council sort of escalated from there to the point of, the audit actually goes in, looks at their food service, looks at their alcohol, looks at their reporting to the city, looks at their actual purchases, and then basically does an audit to find out, are they in compliance with our ordinances and the reporting tax guidelines? And then actually makes a determination as to whether or not they qualify as a, under the ordinance, as a restaurant that's allowed to serve alcohol versus a bar. 'Cause if they don't qualify, then they'll say, well, they're a bar, but then, you know, so the results of the audit, you know, eventually would come back to the council as to who's in compliance or not. Ultimately, the goal is just to make sure that they're in compliance, not to, you know, shut anyone down, if you will.
Correct. Yeah, right now, everybody is, we're, the city is dependent upon people being truthful with us by filling out the forms and reporting it, and we currently don't make much effort to check behind the voluntary reporting. This audit would verify that people are telling us the truth or not.
It also has to do with the tax collection on it, right? If they're paying the fees they're supposed to pay?
Correct.
That they're in compliance that way also?
Yeah, i, if, if, if an establishment were reporting that it was selling X as for alcohol, and the audit shows that they're paying, paying 3X, then we know we're not collecting all the tax money we should be collecting.
Alright, that's B, F1, F A, the, please, Council member, make a choice.
Yeah, okay, a couple things. I don't know if anyone, I never got the results of the, the surveys that were done for the city manager by us, by department heads and everything else. I thought that's probably something we should get. You know what I'm talking about? We all did anonymous surveys, that sort of thing. And, so I'd like to see, I don't know where it is, but I, I'd like us to get it. Also, this is something that happened under the prior administration, as far as the passwords for our Villareca mail. I don't know if this applies to any employees. I only am speaking as a council member. So this came up under prior administration, it just got put on my back burner. And I think I, I think I might've thrown it out to you in a conversation, but never in a serious way, probably, in an email to say. The em, the password I have for my email, I'm assuming y'all's is all the same with one minor thing. Instead of it having a three for Ward three.
Well, 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 let's, let's not, 'cause I don't know what they are, but, but, but please don't say something in the record if you think you know someone's password, please.
My password was given to me by. My password was given to me by the city clerk when I was elected.
It's the same one, it's never, ever changed?
It's the same.
Wow.
And I don't, so. Okay. And so, I mean, just think about that. Anything else you do in your life, does somebody else do your password? They might send you a temporary, and then you'll switch it. So I don't know if everybody else's is exactly the same as mine with one minor tweak, which would mean anybody in the city that knew one of the passwords could guess everybody else's and could access, any city council member, I don't know what the mayor, I think he just used his own, our email, our city email. That's probably not a good idea, so I'm just requesting that we address that. If I'm the only one, then just address it with me. If everybody else has their own set up password, they did their own, and they feel secure in their email, then it's not a problem for them. Otherwise, I'm requesting that all of us be able to set our own password, and whether we have to work with our IT person. Wouldn't that make sense?
Yeah, I would tell you, it makes very sense.
Somebody could go in and type an email for me to other people.
I mean.
And it would come from my account. That's just not.
You know, fifteen, twenty years ago, that was a pretty good show on TV, Password.
You know, the reality is, you certainly see from the standpoint of the city, when I send something, you actually get it at multiple email addresses. You get it at your official city, and then I understand that you all have designated a personal. The reason that it's done is because anything sent or received on the city's computer is supposed to be archived. We can reach out to our IT company and certainly, you know, change all. One of the things that we have been talking internally is password security, because it is a concern that, you know, employees, it's prohibited, there's a lot of prohibited things put in our employee manual that doesn't allow you to share passwords. Makes it, you know, a terminating offense if you try to log on to someone else's using their password. I mean, there's very, very, so from an employee's standpoint, there's very, very stringent, you know, guidelines. On the council side, you know, when I got here as city manager, you know, quite frankly, with the exception of one council member, everybody was using their own personal email address. So, you know, we changed the email address, even the official email address on the website to the true official, because that's compliant to the open records, open meetings law. Two, you know, each of those passwords can be changed. There are logs, so we can contact our IT company, and they can actually go in and produce the log. They can show you the IP address, which is like a serial number, you know, if anyone's logged into your account, where it's, you know. But what we can do is certainly reach out and say, okay, you know, contact each council member and change their passwords. I mean, that's a no-brainer. That's, you know, if you've got concerns, you know.
I primarily use my personal because I don't like the city one. I find it hard to use, and I am a little IT challenged, but it does not appear to be user-friendly. And so I find it much more efficient, but I do use them. And three council members did also use their city email, because we get things, I mean, people send stuff, that's what's on the website. They send us things there. I just think it should be secure like anything else. And my last, last thing, and this has been brought up by several people, being that we're in the state of missing people, our permanent mayor and a council member, is that we consider freezing hiring, firing of department heads until those other positions are in place, because we don't have a permanent mayor and we have no representation for Ward Five.
What's that got to do with hiring, firing folks?
Well, because we're the approval process.
Okay.
We, us, this limited number up here are the approval process of every hiring for a department head.
Well, you're a confirmation.
Confirmation.
It's a huge difference, because otherwise, we're talking about micromanagement from the council.
Okay, so, let me make sure. If we did not consent on a department head, the department head can still be hired? I misunderstood. I thought, I thought it required, even on the solicitor, I thought it required our consent.
Approval of the council.
It does?
Yes.
So that's why, I just, I feel like we're operating, well, we're operating minus two people.
Oh, we have no open department heads.
One of them can't vote, meaning the mayor. So you're down one person, which simply means it's four council members to vote. I agree with Mr. Miller, and there is no department head available. You know, if somebody does something wrong, needs to be fired, he needs to go, or she needs to go. And if we need to hire somebody else to replace him, hire him. I don't want to tie somebody's hands, because we are minus one council member.
Well, I feel bad that we're stuck in this position. I hope it gets taken care of this legislative session, that we're never in this position again to be this many months without our acting mayor, although Ms. Marchman is our interim mayor, and we were able to take care of having that. But still, she can't do, but she doesn't get to do all the mayor powers. And we have usually looked for the input of the mayor. Even though the mayor can't vote, the mayor has input and consensus on a lot of decisions. So anyway.
I think one of the misconceptions that Mr. Mecklen can correct me is the fact that as soon as the elections are over, the next day, the council member can be set in place.
As soon as the election is certified, which is usually about a week later.
And it might be December, because with four people, the mayor, well, it could be a runoff for both. If it's a runoff for both, it will be December before someone is seated. It'll be November if there's no runoff, if somebody takes, what, over fifty percent? But hopefully, they'll fix this, because they sure did leave us in straits with this length of time, with two people missing on city government. It's not good.
All right, G, we've already covered healthcare benefits. So we go to two, which is by our city attorney.
The, this is a change in the city's retirement plan. Really, the only significant change that's being made is simply to make the, anybody that's filling the city manager position able to be vested in the plan upon being hired as a city manager. And that's consistent with the contracts that we've had with our last two city managers.
Was it seven years for the rate of those boys?
It is ten years, I believe, for some folks, and five years for others. For the people on the city council, it is immediately upon taking office. And that would make the city manager equivalent to somebody serving on the council.
That's the retirement plan.
Retirement plan.
But it's, from my understanding, it's mandatory. Like, I tried to opt out with the GMA, they said I can't opt out.
Correct. It is, everybody is a participant in the plan.
Isn't that odd that elect, I don't know. It's not exactly a career here.
You could provide.
Retirement plan.
Provide that it would, people be allowed to opt out, but it would reduce the benefits for everybody else. And I think the policy decision was made that, in order to maximize the retirement benefits for city employees, that it would be a mandatory plan.
I see, so we would hurt the employees if we.
I see, okay.
City attorney, the other change is, the pension secretary will be designated as the HR manager. Before, it was a, what was the title? Customer Service Manager? Yes.
All right, we're clear on that. Item number three, the twenty sixteen millage rate, this for our city manager.
This is to advise the council and then also sort of seek direction. So you've got a millage rate that's required to be set, and the millage rate is to cover your budget. So because of our fiscal year, which is a calendar year, you set your budget, and then you go through. However, the taxation process is sort of on a different schedule, if you will. Now, we've gotten consolidation sheets on the properties for Douglas County, but certainly, if you're tracking in the news, no city in Carroll County, as of this meeting, has received any guidance or consolidation sheets from Carroll County. The reason is because they have reassessed all the properties. The CFO and myself had a conversation with both tax collectors in both counties yesterday, trying to figure out where they are. Certainly, Douglas County has raised their hand in concern that, you know, if we're not in tandem where we normally should be, that it's going to cause great angst and cost on their billing side, because we have, of course, the bulk of Ward Four in Douglas County with a very low minute carve-out, but they need to bill for taxes. We can't set our millage rate on just a slice. We have to see the full picture. The tax commissioner for Carroll County is going back, because numbers that they show versus numbers that the tax assessor's office show are not jiving. And they don't want to issue anything and then have us move forward with concern. There's also some issues with exemptions. And certainly, we have some large abatements that have been granted for economic development and some other things. So, long story short, we sort of have a pickle, but there is a way around it. You know, at some point, we have to kick off the process so that we can evaluate and ultimately choose the millage rate, but we're going to need some numbers. What I would like to suggest is that we go ahead and kick off the advertising with what's called a millage rate placeholder. Basically, what you're doing is you're taking the identical millage as it is right now today, and you advertise that as a placeholder. Now, what that does under Georgia law is that you cannot go over that millage rate without starting the process anew. However, if you were to come back as a council, once you got the numbers, and said, we want to do a complete rollback, then the process then could be completed within one week. But that's a gamble. If you want to do anything other than the rollback, then you're required to have your public hearings, and that draws it out anywhere from, you know, roughly about three-week process. Given the fact that we're here at the end of July, knowing that we really should be wrapped up within the next thirty days, but we're no closer to that right now, is why I'm recommending we go ahead and at least start the advertising process, pretty much understanding that we're not going to, you know, raise millage. You know, the high-end numbers that I've seen, you know, are going to ultimately be affected through appeals anyway. And so when we go through the millage rate process, I'm going to caution the council, and I'm really going to probably recommend, after great consultation with CFO, about tweaking where we set things based on percentages, anticipating those appeals. And I think that, you know, even when you see some of the verbiage from the county commission chairman in Carroll County, you know, he's like, look at your paperwork and familiarize yourself with the appeal process, because some have seen large valuations. All of this predicated by the fact that the county, of course, had not done regular assessments of properties, and therefore, you might as well say what it is, got their hands slapped. They proactively have gone out there. The current county commission chairman wasn't aware of this until he got the notification. And then the county tax assessors, you know, they hired independent companies, come out and do the assessments. Long story short, it could be next week, it could be the week after. It's hard to say. We can't, you know, pinpoint a date, nor is the tax commissioner willing at this point. Obviously, they're doing their due diligence, they're trying hard, but they can't give us a date as to when we're going to get this information. So my recommendation and advice is, go ahead and allow staff to advertise that placeholder, and then we'll take it from there, once we start getting data in and actually know where our tax digest truly is. But right now, we have no clue.
Did we have to do this last year?
Yes, correct. And we had, we had three public hearings, but we had the data.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
When did we finally set it last year?
We set it, I think the date I saw was, we did all the hearings, public hearings in August, almost systematically, and then we went right down to the wire of a potential veto that was compromised, and then we set it at your regular meeting, because we did the two in tandem.
September?
I think it was the first meeting in September. But if you don't advertise and then hold those public hearings leading up to that, you can't set it. And so that's the pickle, is we've got to get a placeholder, but we have to have a placeholder that you're comfortable with. So my recommendation is, start the placeholder with where it is right now today, and then let's see what the rollback sheets show, so that you can start having some discussions once those are calculated.
Like last year.
So are you all cool with that?
Yeah, I knew what was going on with the county. I just didn't realize till today exactly how it was going to impact us.
Yeah, and since we also do the finances for Temple, it's, you know, everybody's affected, but, you know, we're in this boat together, and we're sort of going to recommend to the CFO, to Temple, that they do the same thing as we're doing. Thank you.
All right, item number four is Vicky.
This item before you is an agreement for software solution services. To date, the Parks and Rec Department has been handling all of their registrations, facility management manually. This service agreement essentially will give us an opportunity to move all these services online. And so as all the upcoming registrations will come up, we will give us, essentially give us the opportunity to notify any of the participants, and then they can go online and start logging in to basically facilitate the process for us. This particular service agreement, the rate is essentially one percent in terms of the transactions. So looking at all of the revenues that we have brought in as relates to registration, classes, rentals, we are looking at, it was still under two hundred and fifty when I looked at the numbers for two thousand and fifteen in its entirety. So one percent of that is roughly about twenty-five hundred dollars annually is what we're, if I had to anticipate what it would be. But again, all of that is based upon the number of users that are going in the system.
Two hundred and fifty what?
It was two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
So if you're looking at one percent of that, that's only two thousand five hundred dollars, if I had to estimate, again, that one percent of that.
So this is so people aren't having to come in the office?
Correct.
And do other, they can get online and do their registration for sports? Am I understanding all that?
Correct. And so, just to give you an overview, it allows for the, any of all the sports activities, they go on and register. If you're looking at wanting to rent a facility, it allows the staff even to look on their end, but also anyone who's interested, they can see the calendar and go in and make requests. On the athletic side, it also provides a public interface. So even if I was a coach, once all the league scheduling, for example, has been done, they have the opportunity to even communicate to the teams that they're coaching. They can send messages out to say, hey, if it's a last minute, there's a cancellation. They can shoot out emails. So it even provides a means for them to interface and communicate with their teams as well. So we think this is a great solution, and it really advances us from where we have been from a management standpoint in terms of doing everything manually, so.
I assume you all will be advertising that to everybody, so they know it's available, they want to rent a facility, they can go and see if the dates are already taken.
Absolutely. So what we have been doing for most of this year, we've gone ahead and started putting together a list of all of the email addresses for everyone. So basically, once we get this process going, we can upload all of those, and from a marketing standpoint, we can start pushing it out in advance, saying, hey, this is coming. It's shooting them emails in advance to say, hey, you can go ahead and set up. Even prior to us opening registration, it provides an opportunity to do that. So that's something that we're. So, that's something that we're certainly going to work on. Understand that there will be some glitches. It is my intention that, to make sure that we can roll this out during what is our lowest number. Winter sports is typically the smallest registration period for us in terms of the number of participants. My goal to try to do it during that particular timeframe, so that, you know, we've kind of worked out any kinks that may be prior to spring registration starting. But again, it's getting all of those email addresses that we have been collecting in the system in advance, so we can send out all of the notices to say, "Hey, let's get you signed up early," and so that they're aware of it. We know that we're still going to have some that come in, but we're going to certainly need to direct them and get them used to doing things online.
So, same for instance, if somebody wants to use Power Park, they can look online and see when it's open and when it's not, be considering somebody's already booked it for that particular date, and then they can see the open dates. Is that, would that be on there too? I know you're talking about registration for the sports, but would that be considered in there too?
Yes, there is a facility management. So, all of our facilities, they'll definitely be able to look and see the calendars that are on there, and then go ahead and make the request as well. So, that's another, again, that's an added feature where they can see that as well as all of the staff on our end.
To reserve it? That means they can also do a deposit?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I would assume so.
We should be able to do everything online, really, and that's kind of where we want to direct everyone.
What if you don't have a computer?
Then certainly, you could still come in, but...
You know, telephone number's 459-7011.
I'm sorry?
Telephone number's 459-7011. Telephone calls works every day.
Certainly, people can call into staff. Let me just say, it's mobile-friendly, because I do know, a lot of people may not necessarily have the traditional at-home, but there are a lot of people who are, certainly can pull things up on their phone and look in that way. They may choose to just be, to gear themselves toward mobile activity, so you can pull it up on your phone as well.
Well, you can still go in and do it the old-fashioned way, right?
You can come in the old-fashioned way. You just can come in and pay that way. So, we recognize that.
Berlin, if you don't have a computer, you go to the Villarica Library, and they will help us.
Which one? Which one?
Tricky question.
Right now, I'm not sure. Are we in the process of moving things yet? I haven't seen that in my email.
Two of the three things I think the coaches already do. They already have the ability to inform all the athletes of practice time, schedules, and whatever, and have the ability to email you or anyone else at the reg department. I just don't see the big advantage, you know, if some people want to sign up, I really would like to see those folks walk in the door, where we can look at them and see if this is really the kind of people we want in our community or in our program. There may be some special needs that's not available online that you can see when they do walk in the door, so I'd do some thinking about this one.
Okay. That's your report. Item number five.
Just for the...
That was fine. All right.
I'm not sure if this made it into y'all's packets. It was on the agenda, and then it was taken off and put back on, so I'm going to pass on another set.
They have one.
I think we've got one.
Just tell me what it is. You don't want to look at mess up.
G5.
Oh, okay, G5.
It is a, the bulk of this that you have in your packet is a petition that I received from concerned residents about the intersection behind Walmart at the Walin Apartments. Over 200 signatures were gathered, and I know you all considered this last December, and there wasn't money in the budget at that time to do any of the engineering that was required. I did include the engineering estimate that was given back in December, and for the engineering, it's 24,500. The total project cost for a four-way stop is estimated 125,000. I didn't include the previous traffic study that I did. I only have one traffic counter in my department, so I can only put it out on one street. The traffic engineer is recommending a four-point study, which means there would be a traffic counter at every single stop sign, and we would be putting the proposed stop signs. That would give you more information about whether a four-way stop is actually warranted for that area.
This is right behind Walmart. You brought this up before, Berlin, haven't you? One of your constituents said it to me when I happened to be talking to him about something else.
And she came to my office today, and I told her that I thought it wasn't going to be on the agenda, but they have a pretty big group of people I think they were going to bring to the council meeting.
Is the four-way stop, is it not skewed because of the apartment?
It is a little bit skewed.
I don't know how many apartments there are or cars in there, but it would seem though, as though, there would not be a whole lot of people going in and out daily, other than, but on South Carroll Road, it may be two, three, or four times as many.
Well, and the, what you do is take an average, so that way, you take out that factor.
So, this is the first time I'm seeing this, right? So, they're saying the average speed is 51 in that area back there behind, and those people are crazy. Okay, so, I mean, because you're coming up right behind where that, and then you get down to where O'Charley's is, that's just crazy.
And I think I've mentioned to you all before, the way a speed limit is set for a street is based on the 85th percentile. So, technically, we should have the speed limit 55 on that road, but that's, as we all know, that's way past.
Because there's 85% crazy people driving that kind of speed back there, where there's intersections in those apartments, and is the engineer will figure out, okay, if you have a stop sign, you're coming off of 61, and you're coming, you know, by the bank, you're coming that, whatever direction that is, because you're kind of heading east, and then you're turning north. Are they concerned that that's going to back up?
That is one of the concerns, that it would back up.
I don't see that it's a problem necessarily from the other way. I can see that that could really be a problem, but the engineers figure that out better than I can. Is that the best option? Or, I'm sorry.
Well, the engineering is going to be about $25,000.
That's something.
Yeah.
I need to be an engineer.
And then the whole project is another $100,000. But I did, since there were so many people that had signed this petition, I felt like it warranted letting you all know.
Wow, that's just the engineering. The 25 plus another 100, what's the 100 after that?
That's for the actual doing the intersection, the signs and paint and...
Say anything else.
Probably widening some lanes there.
Yeah. Well, that's a lot more involved when you got to do that. I should've been an engineer.
Let's start on the list, but this is one to bring something.
Mr. Miller, help us understand the project at 61 and 78.
Which project? The Gateway Project?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes. What aspect would you like, no, sir?
Did the contractor fulfill the agreement with this contract?
Not 100%, no.
Is there any recourse?
Yes, we have started the process of reaching out to the contractor. For instance, there was an audit of what was supposed to be planted, for instance. Not everything got planted, but there was also some responsibility on the city. I will say that, you know, I'm no expert on landscaping, but I will say that, you know, I had three independent landscapers come out, and they thought that the expeditious way that the grass took over the whole thing was like, wow! So, there was a little balance on that contract that was approved by the council. So, we've used that to hire an independent contractor who's done work for the local schools and using inmate labor. We're doing it, doing it right. That's not to say that the contractor did it wrong. I don't want to prejudice that. We're just doing it a different way. We're making sure that the weeds are killed, that there's weed barrier put down, that we're working with Douglas County to get free mulch, we're hauling it in. And as I said to someone, we're going to make it pretty, and we're going to do it, do it a different way, and we're going to make sure that it stays that way, because, quite frankly, it was just embarrassment. We don't have landscapers on staff. You know, we have folks that know how to operate equipment, and they do a great job, but we, as a city, can't get into high maintenance issues. Certainly, like, for instance, when we've been talking about the landscaping at the new library, you know, something that, you know, we've chatted from the get-go is, it's got to be low maintenance, you know, we've got to make concessions, because, you know, those are our resources that we have available. So, does that answer your question, sir?
Sir, I was just, the grass grew so quick, it really kind of floored me that there was no weed barrier put down.
No weed barrier. I mean, the contractor had come in and had indicated to us early on that, you know, there was some very, very invasive grass in there, they'd used chemical, things of that nature. But, yeah, I mean, given the fact that, you know, we had a very, very precipitous winter, but I think all of us were surprised that in just a three-month period, the, I mean, it got very invasive and fast. So, now, there is a, if you go, you'll see we've painted it out, they're going to actually put a grass barrier down, and then they're putting weed barrier, and that's a lot of square footage. You've seen the prisoners out there with them on a daily basis, and I pretty much have them assigned full-time until we get that job done and get looking back to, you know. And then, of course, there's still, you know, I think a couple thousand flowers that, is it the daylilies? My vegetation is, do you remember the one plant Janet that was still, there's still one more that was supposed to go later? But those are still need to get planted, and then, of course, we're following up on things like, you know, I think there's like seven missing crepe myrtles and things like that.
So, you're saying we do have some recourse as to the original contractor? I mean, I don't know him personally. I know you're trying to be polite. I'm not a landscaper.
Well, I don't want to get into a legal issue. That's why I'm choosing my words, and I'd encourage you, with your lawyer next to you, to do the same.
Okay, I'm not a landscaper.
But at your house...
But I have done yard work, and I have found that you don't have to be a landscaper to know some basic landscaping things. I would expect a contractor to know more than I do.
But can you not? You know, from the city standpoint, we have to also take some responsibility. We did not do certain things.
Or whatever.
You know, we should have, you know, you know, we were pushing the staff, get out there, make sure you're watering it, make sure you maintain it, things like that, but then it occurred, you know, this, well, no one ever went out there and showed them exactly what they had to do. I mean, when they cut it the other day, I mean, they do a beautiful job. I mean, we've got some really hard workers, but, you know, from the get-go, you know, if you're not shown and taught how to maintain something, but again, we need low maintenance, and that's where we're headed with this, and I'm doing it at the absolute low cost. You know, I think my net, I'm using the balance of what the contract, we still have $50,000 coming back to us once we certify and sign off on the right-of-way maintenance agreement. So, we still have the rebate of 50,000 coming to the city, so I'm using the balance for the management side. So far, our cost is about 3,000, give or take, on the weed barrier, and, but in that agreement, you know, if I'm not mistaken, I am pretty sure I read that agreement multiple times, there's a 50-year requirement on the city to maintain that plant, and you want it to, the whole reason, you know, that was done from the get-go, I'm sure, was so that you have beautification, and that's, and it wasn't looking pretty.
And did it go in? I'm trying to remember.
We finished up, it was like March and April, so it went fast.
A rugged year for it to survive, too.
Oh, yeah, 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 and it's, you know, we've run the water trucks out there, things of that nature, but we're hoping with the mulch that, long-term, we're going to get it and get it done right and get it fixed and not have this issue again. That's our hope. So, Councilor, did that answer all your questions, sir?
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome.
You know, it looks, it's really, it's going to be a fantastic project, but like you said, you know, the grass that grew up just so quick, a lot of folks are looking at it and wanting to see a whole lot better, and it will be before you all get through with it.
And it should look pretty, and I admit, I mean, we had a lot of issues. I mean, the council's well aware of, you know, we've been struggling even with our boot camp crews, and that's no excuse. The reality is, we have a responsibility, we should have been taking it, we didn't, we have to share the responsibility. So, now, we're paying the price, and we're getting it done, and we're getting it done right, and so far, it's looking great.
We just need, we can blame Terry Horton, the guard. He should not have gone to the hospital and had kidney stones taken out.
I'll let them know that, and we'll try to work through that in the future, sir. And I'll seek a credit back.
All right. If nothing else, we will join until Tuesday evening at 6:00 P.M.
You sure you want to leave this early?
You got something to talk about?
Yes, we can't take after.
No, but I mean, I'm sure we could hash out anything.
Well, has anybody got any?
Let's go. I gotta get you guys to your next thing, anyway.
Hold up, hold up. I'm sorry.
Hold up. What? Got something else?
Could we have our rodeo man address us momentarily on the sign ordinance, and I apologize, because I was supposed to say this in those four things.
You know, I marked it here. You swapped your topics. I was like, well, maybe she meant something else.
This is my life, notes everywhere, and I'm sure we have organized, and they're all over the house.
Well, it's ironic that it's marked as F5, that's not tornado, but it's up to the mayor.
I know, we all need to be somewhere at 5:30, too, but this, I think, is time-sensitive. If we've got to do something or not do something real soon.
By Tuesday night?
By Tuesday night, because we only meet once a month where we vote, unless it's a special call meeting, that gets expensive. Could we hear a little bit about just the impact of our sign ordinance and how it's going to impact an event we have every year?
Well, I really think that Ms. Hyde would be able to answer all those questions, but not specific to him. I mean, I don't have a problem with what's taking place, and I think we can rectify that issue, but I also think that being specific to him doing this means that we need to address it as a whole, rather than just one thing.
In general, because this would happen to any special event like this, that just happens to be the event coming up, it will impact any events like that, that we do locally. So, let's have some more fun. Now, we thought it was all over the place, sorry, folks.
Clint Chance submitted a letter to me requesting to put up signs for the rodeo, as he always does, and since the sign ordinance has changed since last year, we now allow signs, real estate-type signs, to be on residential property with no permit required on residential property.
Real estate signs.
Real estate size signs.
Size signs, there we go.
If those signs go on commercial property, they're required to have the written permission of the property owner, and the fee is $35 per sign for 30 days.
If it's on commercial property. So, if O'Charley sticks out a real estate size sign saying, "It's Free Pie Wednesday," it would cost them $35.
Yes.
The unintended consequence is that when you have a community-wide special event going on, it's not one sign in front of a business. We're talking beaucoup bucks, because we advertise all over the city.
Right. So, I think what Clint is asking is for the council to waive the fee for that event, for the sign permits.
Do we need to waive the fee? Do we need to change the ordinance? Because this isn't just about Clint.
Sounds to me like we take it individually.
You can't change the ordinance before Tuesday, because it's going to require a public, planning commission, public hearing, so I think it's going to...
We could waive the fee and then adjust, address the bigger problem of how this is going to affect things all down the road for the years to come. I like that idea. Because it's time-sensitive for this. We also charge people to put up yard sale signs?
They pay a fee at the police department for a yard sale permit. They are not given permission to put up a sign.
$2?
$2.
Yes, but it can, is that going to be an issue? What about size?
They could put a yard sale sign the size of a real estate sign, and I forgot the exact size, it's like one by two or something.
Is this all stuff that's waiting for me to sign?
They could put that on... They could put that on their property, on residential property, with the property owner's permission, or on their own property.
So we still have another problem. If I'm driving down 61, I'm supposed to see a real estate, something the size of a real estate sign that's publicizing a big event?
If it's a yard sale.
No, not a yard sale, special event, okay.
And we can't distinguish between yard sale and special event, but what I was about to ask is, is it in the right-of-way? Because that's where you typically see the yard sale signs, and code enforcement picks those up.
Okay, so if we, if there's, let's just say, for instance, out of the blue, there was a rodeo going on in Villarica, you know, by some strange occurrence, the signs to advertise that event can be how big?
They can be up to 32 square feet, four by eight, like a banner.
Okay. Like we put out for soccer, and stuff like that. So do we have any, are we addressing this issue adequate that's coming up? Is this going to take care of our current problem till we can really solve it?
Yes.
Real quick, the easy solution to the whole thing is make Villarica a sponsor of the event, and let's go.
So what you want to say is you want to take taxpayers' dollars to sponsor a private event? So if we do this one, then we should use taxpayer dollars?
I didn't say that at all. I didn't say that at all. I said, "We need to say that Villarica is a sponsor of this event, period."
We can be a sponsor with no...
That's correct.
Okay. So we can be, we don't give you anything sponsor, but you can put your sign up, that's our sponsorship.
As I think one of the council members said a while back, "We can do anything we want to, if we vote on it."
Yeah, that's...
That's not exactly accurate.
The lawyer said that is not exactly accurate. That's why he's here, to keep me and you out of trouble.